At five thirty-four, we'll call the meeting to order. The approval of the minutes from September the eighteenth, twenty twenty-four.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Wait, hold on. I think that I sent a revised agenda.
Right, it's October.
Yep, and I pulled up the wrong one on this, but I think that it was the October something.
Oh, you did send a revised agenda. Uh, where is that?
Okay, it's October, October the sixteenth, twenty twenty-four.
I apologize.
No worries, I'll make a motion to approve the October minute.
A second. We have a motion and a second. Ready for the question? All in favor, let it known by saying aye.
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 Oppose? Ayes have it, motion carry. Three, introduction of new bureau chief, Betsy Logan. Oh, it's not there. Take that bottle off of there, too.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Hi, I'm Betsy Logan, I'm the new bureau chief for the city. Um, I started in December, you know, so I've been here for a couple of weeks and you have my resume, so if you have any questions on my background or history, I'm more than happy to share. Yeah, thank you.
Yeah. Welcome, and thank you. Um, number four, subdivision and land development. A, wave of land development, thirty-two North Water Street.
I'm having technical difficulties today. Um, this is a standard waiver of land development for thirty-two North Water Street. I did send along some pictures because the gentleman applying couldn't be here tonight. And so I did send along the pictures. The, the most important piece of this is the, the fact that he is dividing it into four apartment units when the threshold is three. And so that's the, the big note. In all other ways, it falls under no impact. So if there are any questions or reservations, I'm happy to answer what I can or since he couldn't be here, if you wanted to go by any other means of reaching out to him.
Uh, yeah, my, I definitely understand applying for a waiver, uh, given three versus four, but some questions that come to mind are, uh, if the developer is considered putting any storefronts in as well. Um, I don't know how that would impact any land development, but, uh, you know, this is where a bike lane is supposed to go. And so part of how I'm thinking about this is, um, a different type of commercial corridor. Um, so I'm, I'm not opposed to a waiver, but I think just some more detail would be, uh, interesting, for us to understand how it plays into the larger plans of the city.
I don't, he did not have any plans for any commercial businesses? If that's the question.
It says that it's converting the existing rear warehouse section. Because isn't, this is where the art gallery was, right? So there is commercial.
But he's converting into apartments.
Yeah, but in the, I, I guess it's a little confusing because in the letter that you included in the attachment, it says converting the existing rear warehouse section of this building into apartment units.
So there's no storefront? Correct.
Because the, the, there is a storefront, but I, it looks like that's not.
It's the rear warehouse, it's, this is for the warehouse.
Yeah, it's not the, it's not the street.
It's out back, I think it's a separate building.
Can we, are you able to pull it up on Google Maps so we can see?
Sure, absolutely. I actually pulled it up earlier today, so that's.
I mean, it looks like the, what we're talking about is the, the single-story portion that actually fronts along Grant Street and not Water Street. So I'd, I'd kind of be interested to see if there's going to be access to this portion of the building from Water Street or if it's primarily going to be off of Grant Street.
I'm sorry, are we talking about South Water or North Water?
North.
North Water.
Thank you.
Uh, North Water.
Right behind the Ware Center.
Okay.
And so you actually, you can't see it from here, I can try to access it from Grant.
Gotcha.
Yeah, so that's, that's the storefront. If you go, if you go to the satellite view on the other. Sorry, if you go back off of the, oh.
Uh, do you know why the owner of this particular property wasn't able to be here this evening to answer questions?
I don't.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I think some kind of just basic site plan, even if it's a back-of-the-envelope one that helps us make sense of where this is and how it's going to be laid out on the site, I think would be really helpful. Again, I'm not necessarily suggesting that we go against the waiver, but I think some more visual information would make this a little less of a challenge to interpret.
Yeah.
Uh, Ms. Finn, if we go against the waiver or postpone, um, the vote on this this evening, can you tell me, um, let, let's hypothetically say we decline the waiver, what then would that particular property owner be required to do? Um, would they have to go through a full land development plan? Would they be able to have, like, is there a simplified streamlined process that they could go through because of the small nature of their, this project?
It would be pushed into a minor plan.
A minor plan.
I mean, I think we would want to just maybe postpone if we're.
You can table it, the, the option is also to table it.
Table it until they're able to be here. I would be in favor of that.
Yeah, I just. And so the recommendation also would be to submit some site plans? Is that showing access points to the, the back?
I think we'd just like a little bit more information than what we have currently in order to make an educated decision.
Yeah, I, I mean, if they can just answer the questions, it's probably, unless they have site plans that they want to share.
Any further discussion? So would you like to ta-table this waiver?
Mr. Chair, I would like to make a motion to table this.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion on the floor to table, uh, this waiver on thirty-two North Water Street. All ready for the question? All in favor, let it known by saying aye.
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 Oppose? Ayes have it, uh, motion carry. We'll table that too, we can get more information. Uh, B, the extension, uh, stadium row, uh, number two?
Uh, good evening, I'm Ben Morton with RGS Associates, the site planning consultants for this project. And, um, Ben Lesher, Ben Lesher from Parsley Development is here as well. This project was, um, conditionally approved by the Planning Commission last February. We're coming up on the one-year limit to address the conditions of approval and are seeking a one-year time extension. Part of the reason behind that is just the length of our HOP review and some uncertainty that we had in that, um, particularly around additional traffic study and just documenting everything the way that PennDOT had wanted it. There have not been any actual changes to the design of the driveway or anything of that sort, um, through that process. We have gotten some movement on that now and expect that will be resolved in the next few months. But we're still looking for the one-year time extension, but sort of the secondary basis of just looking for improvements in the economic conditions around multifamily housing. Um, and so be welcome to take any questions you have on that or comments.
In addition to the, uh, HOP review, are there other outstanding conditions of approval that you forecast that would be difficult in order for this project to come to fruition?
No, we've resolved, uh, the conditions that were, um, under the city's control and have come to an agreement on, say, that what the opinion of probable cost is for financial security. But really, the issue is, um, over the course of the next year, finding the right time to establish that financial security, given when construction might start on the project.
Yeah, what is your suggested time extension?
Uh, we are requesting, uh, one year.
Uh, I just want to make sure I'm understanding, so it sounds like you just want to make sure you can get the best interest rate for the project if needed, then, on, on that portion of the financing, like.
Oh, yeah, I'll take that one unless you want to. Uh, I, yeah, I wouldn't say, necessarily the best interest rate. I mean, uh, economic conditions are, you know, construction costs and interest rates are high right now. The other thing is, which is generally a good thing, but, uh, there's a lot of new supply of apartments. And I've been tracking how they've been leasing up. Um, and it hasn't been honestly quite as fast as I hoped or maybe expected. Uh, some of them are offering concessions and things which you may all be aware of, so. Yeah, that's part of just being wise about, um, investing a lot of money and, and not knowing if there's demand for it, so.
I can appreciate the call around that.
Yeah, the other thing to just, you know, to my understanding is the ordinance hasn't changed. So I don't know, um, yeah, that, that there's, uh, if, if it, if you don't extend, you know, that a new kind of look at it would, uh, there's nothing sort of new to look at.
Uh, maybe this is a question for Lauren. Do you know, I know there's a smaller plan planned for the stadium area. Do you know what the timeline is for that plan?
I don't, but I will in another couple of days because I have a meeting. I don't know right now what the timeline is. I, I do believe, like, it's in the next couple of years.
Okay.
I, I don't know the exact timeline, but I know Lancaster City Alliance is like actively working on kind of putting together the, the team, the consultant team. And I know they've reached out to me and other, like, property owners and stuff to start, um, you know, having meetings and things like that.
Ms. Finn, is the city in support of this time extension?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to extend the stadium row additional approval to February twenty twenty-six.
I'll second it. We have a motion on the floor and a second for a time extension to February, February twenty twenty-six. Uh, ready for the question? All in favor, let it known by saying aye.
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 Oppose? Ayes have it, motion carry.
Thank you.
Staff report to the Planning Commission?
So I did send along, again, also in your packet, um, an update on some of the, the plans. I thought that it had been a while since we had all come together and it might be nice for you to see where things are that you, that have been through the approval process. And so, um, that report is something that is generated by our consultants and we meet with them every other week as a team. And then I meet with them on the, on the alternating weeks. And so I meet with them every week to, um, discuss anything in the, the land development process, including preliminary and final plans. Of course, the minor plans are handled completely internally. And so, um, that gives you kind of a rundown of everything that you've had a hand in. I also wanted to, um, make a note that we do have a few sketch plans that are, um, getting lined up. So we have, um, sketch plans that will probably turn around in the next few weeks or month and then they'll go into land development, full land development review. And we had two, I think, resubmissions to land development so that those are in the process right now of being reviewed by the consultant. So they will be here, like, also probably, you know, the next month or two, depending on how many resubmissions that they have to do. Uh, so there's, there's quite a bit in the pipeline, um, after quite, quite a lull. It's really just a matter of timing in terms of how many resubmissions they need to meet the conditions that are set out by the city. I just wanted to give that as an update. Oh, then, um, the other, uh, piece is that we have an empty seat right now on the commission. We are happy to take recommendations if you know people. You're welcome to put the word out. This is particularly, um, for the southeast section. Uh, it's replacing Maxine Cook and so she's going to be a tough one to replace. But we are happy to talk. I've talked with a couple of people, we haven't quite found the right person yet to fill the role and so happy to keep talking. We're not in any big rush because there are many of you and we do have two wonderful alternates. And so it's, I would rather find the right person, take the time to find the right person than just put somebody in there. And so I appreciate any recommendations that you would put forward. And again, feel free to spread the word to other people as well.
And Mr. Chair, I would love to make a, just a point of commendation for Maxine's time with the Planning Commission on record, for all that she has done with the actual comprehensive plan, with neighborhood engagement and really being our, um, really the face of the commission, if you think about it, uh, during that whole comprehensive plan process. She was really at the front, representing the Planning Commission, representing her neighborhood and just really doing the good thing. And I just wanted to make a point of commendation so that it would be on record for her service.
I was really hoping that we would meet in December because that was when she timed out and then I, I couldn't just bring you all here just to do that, but I was really hoping that we would meet in December so we could do that while she was here. So, um, thank you, Mr. Whelan.
I do want to comment on two things. Well, one, one question, has Maxine herself maybe submitted some recommendations for who she would like to see fill her seat?
Yes, she didn't actually have very many.
Okay.
So, but she was, we did ask her, of course.
Okay. The, the second one, I just, because I'm reading through the update, is this more of a comment, uh, because of my anxiety? You know, I, I understand the plans have been approved, the demolition permit is issued and there's a pre-demolition meeting for the Mosaic project. It is concerning to me that the demolition is still being talked about right now, considering just when you look at their website, uh, it seems they're pretty far of their seventy percent rental target. Um, and I worry that the demolition is kind of a, it's like a, to some part of me, it feels like an echo of an era in Lancaster where we did demolition for the sake of progress and this building could still be adaptively reused in some way. So I just want to make that public note there on that specific project.
So the question is, are you noting this under other business? Mr. Jackson?
Uh, I'm sorry, what?
Are you, are you raising this issue under other business? We didn't quite get there yet.
No, 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 I'm not raising, uh, this is in comment of the project update report we got. Uh, it was, it was in, um, Ms. Finn's list of, uh, projects, the status of them. Uh, it said that there was a pre-demolition meeting, uh, about a week ago and they're looking at demolition at the end of the month, which freaks me out a little bit.
Noted.
That's really all I can say, I mean, this.
Uh, just a, well, I don't know if this is part of this agenda, but for future staff updates, that, um, at some point, it would be great to hear kind of what the next steps have been for the comp plan and sort of where things are with that. If you don't mind kind of doing that for a future meeting, that'd be great.
Absolutely.
Sounds good. Okay. So now we're at, uh, other business? Mr. Jackson?
Nah. Uh, so this is somewhat abstract, but I want to have an open conversation, I guess, with the commission here about, uh, what Mrs. Phil Stewes was asking about, like, updates to the comp plan, things like, of that nature. I, I do understand that, uh, planning staff has been a little short without Douglas for quite some time. Like, those are big shoes to fill, sorry, Ms. Logan. But, you know, we as a commission also have the ability to work and compensate and put recommendations for change. And I am personally a little frustrated with the canceled meetings because those canceled meetings where there's nothing for consideration give us the perfect opportunity to just discuss what changes we'd like to see enacted from the comp plan. There is a lot to do and I want to see it be more of a collaborative effort amongst anyone, like Ms. Hoover, who's in attendance tonight. In the same way we worked through the comp plan collaboratively, now get into the nitty-gritty. And so I think it's important that if we don't have anything for a meeting, we focus those meetings on us coming together as a commission, anyone from the public who wants to be here so that we can start to get changes done. It, I recognize it is a big undertaking and maybe pieces of it need to be happening at a time, but this concern only got amplified with the letter from the developer written by Sunnyside uh, because we are realistically losing our opportunity to actually craft laws for an eco-district, which was, obviously, a pretty big thing in the comp plan. So I just kind of want to see if the commission is also interested in having these sort of meetings where if there's no plans to approve, we can start working ourselves on the changes we need to make in the comp plan. Because right now, my opinion is, uh, without a new updated zoning code, w- we ultimately have a greater discretion about making sure plans are in conformity with the plan. It, it's, it, it makes it a little messy too. I don't necessarily like it we have at level authority, we need to give our developers more clarity.
I'm happy to have our meetings. So what I will do in response to that is if we have no listed agenda items, I will send out an email and I will ask if any of you have items for the agenda. I hesitate to bring you all here just for an open session of conversation because there's no organization to that, there's, you know, we have no way of tracking that. And so if there are specific items that you would like updates on, whether it's, you know, if you want to have a discussion about the eco-district, that's one hundred percent fine. If we want to just have a meeting and talk about updates of the comprehensive plan, absolutely fine. I would just like for them to be actual agenda items. And so what I will do is if we don't have plans for review, I'm happy to still send out an email to all of you and say, if you would like to still meet, please send me agenda items and we can go from there.
I, I would love that, I appreciate that.
Absolutely. I'm here anyway, so.
And I, I just kind of want to add a few thoughts on, onto that. I, I definitely hear a lot, Tony, what you're saying and I, I would certainly be supportive of us trying to think about how we can do more beyond sort of the day-to-day work of reviewing development plans, uh, you know, adopting waivers. You know, how can we be a force for implementation? Now, the comp plan has been adopted within, of course, the, the, the limits of, uh, our own time and of course, most importantly, the limits of what staff can support given their very limited time, uh, and energy and resources. But, but I think as Lauren alluded to, it definitely needs to be very organized and very focused. You know, I think something like us coming together and chatting, well, you know, I think it's always beneficial for us to get together as a group. I don't see that kind of being a very productive way to actually make real progress. You know, the other comp plans that I've worked on, um, you know, there's things like they adopt annual work plans. So we say for the coming year, this is the pieces of the comp plan that we're going to work on and try to make progress towards. And then, uh, then we have like a report card at the end of the year that says, here's how we did. Here's what we need to do better and here's what we're going to work on the next year. Uh, so I certainly think that's something we should talk about, is, is how can we.
This is a great time to do it.
Right, at the beginning of the year. I, I certainly think it's a great thing to talk about. How can we sort of start going beyond our brief, as it were, of, of just being a review and approval body and really start to think about how can we serve a role to really push implementation of the comp plan? It just needs to be very organized and, uh, if it becomes like a regular part of the agenda where, uh, we have an item on the agenda, kind of a standing item of here's what we're going to talk about, what we're doing to move the comp plan forward and just think, talk about how can we as the Planning, the Planning Commission members actually, you know, put our work to the road and, and, and work on some of these items. And I think that's something we should consider for sure.
Sounds good. Any further comment?
Ms. Finn, I just have one question regarding two forty-nine North Queen Street. I'm not sure this is the right, um, uh, place to ask this question, but that building has been condemned for quite some time. It did come in front of the reinvestment board. And then I, I believe there was a rehabilitation agreement, um, in process, but then it was my understanding that that building changed ownership. So, um, that's just in a prime area of our downtown market and, um, it's an eyesore, quite frankly. So I'm just wondering if there's anything, um, happening within the city or any discussions within that to try to breathe a new life into that particular property?
I have not heard anything, um, but I can certainly look into that and find out.
I'm just curious.
Yeah.
Any other business? Ms. Hoover, any, um, public comment?
No, but, um, Nicole, what was the address on that property for the investment board?
Uh, two forty-nine North Queen Street. It, it's two, it's where the cabot station is, the old Puffin Stuff storefront. It's two forty-nine and, two forty-seven, maybe?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
I believe those are the addresses. I'll apologize if I'm incorrect, but I think I'm pretty close there.
Sorry, make a public comment. Ben Lesher, uh, one hundred block of North End Street. Just thinking about some of this discussion about the comp plan, uh, and as a developer, uh, comp plans are very helpful to have guidelines, but, um, at the end of the day, it's the zoning that really matters. So just wanted to encourage you all to keep pushing for that. And there was a lot of wonderful things, like the land use map in the comp plan was awesome, but, um, you know, there's a lot of work there that needs to be done to actually allow us to build the housing and density and, you know, personally, I think, um, parking really needs to be looked at, particularly, particularly for commercial uses. And that's something, I know I get a lot of, uh, folks, uh, Lancaster City Alliance that want me to do commercial first floor. And to do that outside the central business district is actually, uh, quite hard because of the parking requirements to do that. And it's like pretty crazy. And so I could do like one little restaurant and then it would be a sea of parking. So anyway, I'm getting too in the weeds, but just wanted to affirm a movement towards really taking a serious look at changing the zoning.
Welcome, Betsy Logan.
Thank you.
I, I am kind of on that point, I'm curious about how the zoning hearing board is handling. You know, like, kind of we're in this phase where we have to adopt the comp plan, but we still have the old zoning code. And if there are projects that are coming forward which are requesting zoning variance that isn't aligned with the new comp plan, but is not aligned with the old zoning code, how, how are we handling, or how is zoning? how, how are we handling, or how does the zoning hearing board handle those things?
So right now, the zoning hearing board just can only go off of what's in the zoning ordinance. They can't really address anything that's in the comp plan because it's just not part of their purview. They might be aware of it, but until the zoning changes, they're going to have to follow the hardship criteria for appeal or a variance request. Special exceptions as well, they need to make sure they just meet the standards that are in the ordinance. So, but it, the zoning ordinance is like the highest priority on my list of things that we have going on. And CPED has kind of outlined the kind of top 10 things they want to work on this year to get done. And that is obviously one of them, an official map as well to kind of protect some of those areas we've had, not just in the comp plan, but some of the other plans that have been approved. And the small area plans, I think, are like the top five from the comp plan that they're, we're focusing on right now. But zoning is definitely up there. So happy to have more meetings where we can discuss it.
Specifically with, in relation to the way this would work, is this something that needs a different kind of advanced notification? Or is it just posted like a regular meeting?
For the Planning Commission to discuss it, it would just be posted as a regular meeting.
It would still be the same?
Yeah, yeah. If you were to have like a steering committee, we would have to re-advertise that. But just as the Planning Commission, you'd be fine with your advertised meetings. Thanks.
So, so you kind of scooted off before earlier when we introduced you. But I just want to know, in terms of your adjusted period so far, how's it going? How's it been going to the city and the people?
It's been going great. I'm, I was very excited to start working here. Lancaster has a great reputation in the state. I've worked at a lot of different municipalities throughout the state, mostly in the central, like, area. I was most recently at Suscoana Township, which is near the city of Harrisburg. So being in a city, which is kind of my ultimate goal, I'm, I'm really happy to be here. Definitely, there's some things that are different than what I'm typically used to, so I'm trying to learn those processes. Most planning commissions aren't lucky enough to have actual decision-making ability versus just making recommendations. So, but I think the comp plan is great. I'm really excited to work on implementation of it and just trying to learn all the different things that the department and the bureau handle. So.
Yeah, good, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Any further public participation? So I have a motion to adjourn the meeting.
6:07 PM, I'll motion to adjourn.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Ready for the question? All in favor, let it known by saying aye.
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 I snap it, motion carry.
Did you want to say something?
Okay. All right, not too bad.